That's when you get a sharp elbow.
I was more like, we could have been twins. Oh, yeah? I came this close. I got him out of the closet.
Good morning. Young County Commissioners Court has now come to order. Sitting in a regular meeting, Monday, April 12th, 2021. It is 9:32 a.m. Make note that this meeting was posted the matter of course time required. That all members of the court are present. And if it's, we are, we are feeding them on live on YouTube. And if there is anything that any person here or any person in virtual appearance would like to make any kind of statement, pro or con, or any kind of suggestion or announcement to the court on any item that's on the agenda. You may call in at 940-221-2107 while you're viewing on YouTube. Or if you're here in person, there's no need to call that number. Okay, it's convenient, all planned. Join me in our indication and our ways. Our dear and most precious Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you bring our way. We're grateful for this country, even with all the turmoil and discontent and problems that we have. We ask your wisdom, please shed that on the leaders of our country, please, and on this state and on this county as we serve the citizens who have elected us to guide the county as, as we see that the citizens desire. We ask your blessings upon those who stand in harm's way, whether foreign or domestic, to defend our constitution and the rights that we know, the rights that we understand, and the rights that we have come to love and that we wish to protect. As we continue through this, conduct this meeting, we ask your blessings upon us and all the decisions that we are necessary to make at this meeting. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The honor of the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the United Texas, one state, and under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three. Public comments and presentations. I'll start off with our COVID-19 thing, albeit a week ago. It's come to where that report is just presented to us once a week and then usually comes late Monday afternoon. So until something changes, the reports that I have are a week old. One week ago today, there had been 12,667 tests. 9,875 of those were negative. 2,779 were positives. At that time, there were three tests pending. Our total active cases that have, that were under the direction of Young County medical personnel, seven. The residents of Young County that were still had active cases were five at that time. Hopefully, that's improved from there. We had seen those numbers up nearly as high as 300. And so we've, we've come a long ways. I'm afraid that progress continues. There, one person was in the hospital last Monday with COVID-19. We had 2,738 recoveries. And 44 of our citizens have passed away with some sort of COVID complication. And I don't know how many vaccines have, or how many people in our county have been vaccinated, but it's been the thousands. I don't know just how many, I haven't heard that. Do you know that number? Also in these public comments, we have a receipt of COVID occupancy tax report for ending in March of $0 collected from Boulder T Ranch. Next, we have, let's go to the tax assessor collector. We want to make note that she has dispersed her March activity report to the commissioners with regard to motor vehicle registration, side frankfurters, any other kind of tax that may have been collected. And that is in your package. Now. We have a 4-H Volunteer Week proclamation. I have Savannah Williams and Kenny Baron. And it looks like a host of 4-H persons, 4-H tenants or 4-H members. If you'll come forward, please.
We're going to start off with.
Good morning, young county listeners. On behalf of the Young County 4-H Program and our Young County 4-H Council, we are excited to be here with you today.
Very good.
My name is Alden Jones, representing the Lone Star 4-H Club. Each year, thousands of 4-H volunteers donate their time and energy to make the community a better place to live. The volunteers will be gathering men across the country who will be delighted during the 47th anniversary of National Volunteer Week, April 18th, 2024, 2021.
Good morning. My name is Chloe Neil, representing the South Fork 4-H Club. This year's theme for National Volunteer Week is Celebrate Service. It's an opportunity to shine a light on the people and the causes that inspire us to serve. Points of light, an organization dedicated to volunteer service states that volunteerism empowers individuals to find their purpose, to take their passion, and turn it into meaningful change. When each of us in our own way answers to the call to make a difference, we make progress in solving our most persistent problems and create stronger communities and more just society.
My name is Cole Hackett, representing the Lone Star 4-H Club. This week provides us with our opportunity to celebrate the selfless service of organizations. Volunteers at work may do, need to know of wide extension, identify the communities need to share and the educational resources of Texas A&amp;M. All the wide extensions of volunteers involve themselves in programs such as Master Gardener, Master Wellness, 4-H Youth Development, or on local committees focused on these specific areas such as agriculture, natural resources, and family and community health, or youth development.
The Texas 4-H Youth Development Program relies heavily on the work of volunteers. In 2021, in 2020, more than 26,000 adult and youth volunteers contribute to countless hours and vivid capacities to the 4-H youth and the Texas community. And in the Young County, we have over 50 direct and indirect volunteers. Both youth and adult who serve as volunteers for their community members in community assets. I'm not doing that speed in 4-H Youth Development Program.
So Young County 4-H is unique because of its volunteer support. Our volunteers are passionate about our 4-H program, but more importantly, about the lives of our 4-H members. They work our office, they work with our office to provide quality education and activities for our youth through variety of projects, club work, community service, and leadership opportunities. We see firsthand the impact of this program is making our youth because of the great, of these great volunteers. And the devotion to our program and the area in which they serve is vital to our 4-H success. And without them, we would not be able to provide all that we do each year. Their dedication and energy is a testament to the opportunities of love they share with both our youth and parents. And we are blessed and very thankful for each of them. And before we wrap up, if you'd like to introduce our volunteers.
Yes. So we have our Lone Star 4-H Club manager, Loretta Shields, is with us. Joe Bobb 4-H is here recognizing Newcastle, Salt Fork 4-H, and parent adult leaders. And Brad from that is our new shotgun.
And then everybody else have a job, so they said they're.
Here in spirit. Agrolife Extension Volunteers spend numerous hours working on tasks such as leading educational programs, providing guidance and ideas regarding community needs, maintaining gardens, helping organize events at the county fair, helping a child with a 4-H project, or leading a project to serve the community, or directly coaching a youth to help them reach their personal project goals. Agrolife Extension Volunteers are just one group of volunteers who are instrumental in carrying out the mission of Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service. Volunteers are involved in every aspect of extension service, including determining the needs of local residents, planning and implementing programs to address these needs, securing resources, and evaluating problems and programs. Thank you to Agrolife Extension Volunteers for the impact you make on the people and communities around here.
And a special thank you to those that were able to do this today. We appreciate your time. And of course, all the time they offer by our kiddos. And Samantha's got our proclamation for 4-H week that we are submitting to the court.
Read this proclamation.
Sure. Entirely at peace.
Are you ready? This is, each year we do this, make this proclamation. And it's quite meaningful. It's Young County 4-H Volunteer Week proclamation. Whereas volunteering is, the volunteering of one's time is a resource, is a resource, is a fundamental part of our country's tradition, and is essential to its spirit. And whereas it increasingly more evident that our nation's greatest resource is its people, and whereas volunteers have shown that they truly care and share generously of themselves, and whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as a central partner with government, education, and industry in doing the work of our nation. And whereas volunteers in the Young County 4-H program enable youth of Young County to more fully develop and utilize their life skills effectively, use their resources, and more fully extend the knowledge of the university, of the university to the people. And whereas volunteerism directly affects the domestic principles upon which this nation was founded, in that everyone, regardless of circumstance, position, or other factors, can volunteer. And whereas we are seeking even more contributions of human resources and volunteerism and better application of these valuable contributions. Therefore, we wish to honor, to thank, the dedicated 4-H volunteers of Young County who give so free of their valuable time, energy, and abilities by proclaiming this week of April 18th through 24th, 2021, to be officially designated as National Volunteer Week in Young County. And in doing so, I call on, I call all citizens of Young County to help renew and sustain the spirit and vitality of this great nation by committing a portion of their time to address the needs of their communities through voluntary action. As I am as well, to die of life in 2021, by the commissioners and Judge of Young County, Texas. Very good. Good job. Good job. I'm working on here. I'm ready. Well, they're working well. I just want to show we got a raffle going on. We're prepared to raise for 4-H up here.
Sound better.
Judge Joe Bobb. Just as a volunteer, the 4-H. We just have a raffle going on to raise money for our Parents Club 4-H. Where we, we give scholarships to seniors that have been 4-H for three years or more up here. We have a pay raffle going on, so we'll be hitting kids, sending kids your way up here. So if they come, buy a ticket. There are five for.
Twenty.
For twenty up here. And the top prize is a whole hog in a freezer. So, and then the second prize is a.
So it's a half hog.
Half a hog in a freezer.
The second prize is just half a hog.
Y'all be hitting like 4-H gives your pretty soon. So. Four in a freezer.
For the first.
Now, we're going here once one. Okay. What you have there on here? We'll let you, we'll let you choose. Thank you for your time.
Was it done? Are you sure? Oh, thank you so much.
4-H does a lot of good things, right organization. It was quite handy like that, like that proclamation. And with 4-H, that's my, a lot of here, through the court. Item number four, is there anything else?
Yeah.
What kind of job we've got?
This year?
This week. Anybody take a picture?
Please.
Soil water conservation. Soil water. Explain what this is, Dean. It's a proclamation to our soil.
Soil water conservation, it says, whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with a daily substance. And whereas defective conservation practices have helped provide us a rich standard of living. And whereas our security dependeth on healthy soil, clean water. And whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim, April 25th through May 2nd, Soil and Water Stewardship Week.
And by the way, I'm doing that part of the court, not this lady, the whole court. And you have something else you might want to bring with attention to the court here?
Yes, yes. For you, we're here in 3030. For something that we, as not only members, that all people of homeland, but people that like land. On January 27th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed an executive order of 14008, called it Tracking the Climate Crisis at Home and Abroad, 86 Fed, Reg 7619. Contained there is repulsive push by radical environmental and climate change activists, and adopted by the Biden administration called the 30 by 30 program. This program is designed to force into protection 30% of Americans' land and water by the year 2030. Lack of constitutional authority and property rights, there is no insufficient data, and this program poses an immediate threat to Americans who have valued private property rights. The program appears to be a massive land grab and sublures constitutional protection and ends use of both private and federal land. The other thing, if you, if you have anything, there's a They, they're, they go into it in more detail. But right now in Colorado, they've got a massive push right now. And if everything that they have right now on the books be voted on in these bills that they pass, there won't be another cow left in Colorado.
What was that website?
The website is www.americanstewards.org.us. American Stewart, American Stewart.us.
I can give you this, sir.
Yeah, if you want, we're not giving you.
You saw it here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, come get one in a minute.
But it's just another one of those things that they haven't come to Texas yet, but they're already in parts of the other world working on that. And you can go to that website and it'll give you the issue that's going on in Colorado right now that will blow your mind. Other than that, that's all I guess.
Well, you got seven of that.
I gotta say, if I say. It's not good. I'm just, I'm just saying, saying that so that people can pay attention while you're on the road.
Okay, page four, we brought down item number six. Can I say one other thing real quick, Judge? Can I say one other thing? Crawfish and cannons this weekend was a complete success. It was greatness. I mean, I remember the first time I went to crawfish and cannons and it was just a crawfish. And now it's just like a big fair out there. There's all kinds of fun stuff. I know they did really well. We did well as a Lions Club selling sausage. And it was, it was a big success. How many people he met was?
Over, over a thousand. I don't, we haven't got the totals yet. I knew, like the Newcastle Fishing King made 3,000, over $3,000.
They, they were good. We need them to sell them. Because they got me, they got you, I'm sure they got you. They were good. Anyway, it was delicious. Yeah, it was. I don't know, I don't know how many restaurants out there or how many they counted, but it was up there for a hundred leagues. I didn't know. That when I, when I went out there, you know, like, weather was quite nice. Fewer than the Germans, we were blessed to have.
Yes.
Absolutely. It's happened, we have seen such nice weather before. But it was recognized. It was.
And it's the cleanest. It took four people 30 minutes to step in the clean zone.
And people were very appreciative of the progress. Yes, absolutely. Okay. Now we'll go to item number six. And on the second bullet point, this is a discussion, consider Young County 2020 audit results of Judge Mike Etchen. We'll get him up here to explain his. Report, I guess you'd say.
That's a lot of pressure. All right. Judge Chad, my name is Mike Etchen. I'm with Etchen Department of Plumbing and Plating. We have the privilege to work with the county again this year to conduct its annual financial report. We'll go over the annual financial report, the big, larger bound dogs. I want to go over it as thoroughly as I can. I don't want to get too bogged down on things. I'm just going to try to get highlights. But if you have any questions, don't hesitate to stop and ask away. Our opinion on your financial statements are on pages one and two. For the bottom, we have a qualification, and it's the same one we've had the past few years. Judicial counterseals are not reported. We'll talk about that later, but that's still the case this year. Other than that qualification, the financial statements in these documents are of unmodified opinion, which means that it's an unqualified opinion of the highest level that we can insert on your financial statements. Right after that, on pages three through eleven, is a discussion and analysis. That's it. That's an unmodified, or an audit document. We can help draft it, but the county reviews it first. Everything's okay, right? Okay, run. No one else is taking around.
By the way, there's a clock, everyone.
Yeah, gotcha. All right, time to get this. Pages twelve and thirteen, these financial statements are unique, this is the only time you'll see them in an audit report. This is, we convert all the funds of the county into different columns. Governmental activities, we convert it from a modified accrual basis, full accrual basis of the county, so it's a long-term look at your assets and liabilities. We have your capital assets net, your accumulated appreciation, your long-term liabilities are reported. The difference, if we look at the net position, the difference between assets, liabilities, your current inflows and outflows is your equity. The net position is the equity. And the county's position there was almost twenty-five million dollars in net position. And how that changed from prior years on the statement of activities, not going to worry too much with the line, change in net position. We had a positive increase in net position of one million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the year, increasing the net position to that twenty-four, eight ninety-eight. Page fourteen, this is the balance sheet, these are the governmental funds, this is what you're used to seeing. We have the general fund being a major fund, and all the other funds fall into the other governmental columns. The general fund in this case represents several individual funds, it's Fund Ten, the road bridge funds in ninety-five as well. This is on a short-term basis, we don't have those long-term liabilities and assets. Here, it's all on a short-term basis. The general fund had total assets of nine million, three hundred and thirty thousand, liabilities, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, unavailable property taxes, three hundred and fifty-four thousand. The difference between those is your fund balance, your equity, and we have a total fund balance as of the end of the year of eight million, six hundred and forty-four thousand. The unassigned part that's available for future operations is the eight million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand. That represents about eight point, or nine point one eight months of operations. Government finance association says anywhere from three to six is a healthy fund balance, so you're well over that, which is very, very positive. The other governmental funds is your special revenue fund and your debt service, all consolidated down. That total net fund balance is one million, five hundred and three thousand dollars. And how those changed between the two years on sixteen and seventeen, the same two funds, general fund and other governmental funds, have total revenues and expenditures and other sources and uses. Toward the middle, page seventeen, the net change in fund balance, the general fund had a positive increase of one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, and the other governmental, governmental funds have a positive, two hundred and fifty-four thousand. So again, very positive increase this year. After that, we have a lot of, notice your financial statements, I'm not going to worry too much with that. I'll get a couple of them. On thirty-three, this represents your long-term obligations, how the, the bonds payable, the taxables payable, compensated assets, is how they changed during the year. Your total debt actually decreased, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The biggest part of that is your bonds payable, which will be paid off in the twenty twenty-three. Very, very positive there too. Limited debt, we had a little bit of capital use issue during the year, but we paid off just about the same amount, so the balance didn't increase too much. But very positive net balance as well. On page forty, the county participates in the TC DRS, so retirement plan. And in doing so, we have to record the net pension liability or asset through case. Last year, this chart on the top of page forty shows you, and it's based on the calendar year, not the fiscal year of the county. The liability was actually one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. This year, at the end of nineteen, that was actually an asset. It actually flipped that much. It's amazing because you have really no control of what it was or whatever. You contributed exactly what you're supposed to pay. What happened was the investment income was so, the plan actually increased over three point three million just in investment income. So hopefully, if you look at twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty, even with COVID, it dropped quite a bit, you know, just looking at the S and P and all that, it actually dropped, it actually popped back up. And here, as I'm hoping, this may trend or improve again, I can't say to the same extent. If you have a positive net pension liability or asset in this case, that is, that is positive.
That's good.
Is, we're seeing a lot with the white dogs. But again, it's, it's a little bit out of your control whatsoever. You contributed exactly what you're supposed to. The plan as a whole is the, the, you know, allocated to the county, the actual part of that life. After that, on page forty-seven and forty-eight, we have a budgetary comparison schedule. This is of your general fund. Shows the original budget for the county, final amendment, and then the actual operations we talked about, and the variance between the two. The change in fund balance, you actually budgeted a deficit of one hundred and forty-five thousand originally, and then a negative one hundred and eighty-seven, eighty-nine thousand in the final. As I said before, we had a positive, one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand. We did have some minor unfavorable variances. I say minor, there was a couple of larger, in the capital outlay and debt service area. But you can kind of see across the board, positives around. In total, we're well within budget. That's your annual financial report for the year. Any questions for any more letters? Let us very quickly, we're proud.
Or she sent it to us and got the word over.
That's great. I appreciate that too. The other letters, there's a couple I want to go over with you today as well. There's one at the very bottom marked AUC two sixty-five. In addition to expression of opinion on your financials, we look at internal controls and compliance. This letter dictates anything that we saw that were material weaknesses. In the bank reconciliations, not with the treasurer's office, but some of the fee offices, there was no documentation of who completed the bank reconciliation, or who reviewed those, and I've listed those there. And the idea is that everyone is documented, everyone is reviewed by a third party to make sure they're completed accurately and made with the records. Subceded. Also, at the top of page two, we had some material adjustments during the year. Any material adjustments we made, our definition is considered a material weakness. We're hoping that we can get those resolved and hopefully avoid those in the future. And then, as I pointed out, we had some unfavorable budget variances, and we have to list those as well. But again, in total, we're more than clearly in total. So those are the larger material weaknesses. The other one, a letter I'd like to go, the management letter, marked at the bottom right. These are items of less significance, they're still important. I'll list those out because there were several that we had in prior years, and these are the prior year comments, and I give you the status of each one of these. Year-end adjustments, last year, we had some material adjustments. As I pointed out, we still had some adjustments that we made that were material, and we continue to recommend that the post, the audit entries in a timely manner be recorded, necessary accounting, accurately, including during the year to make the year-end adjustments prior to the start of the audit. I brought up judicial receivables. Last year, the JPs were just the only ones using recollective agency. This year, you know, a year we audited, county and the district clerk started using an agency, which is very good. We recommended those in the past, and glad to see those are being used. What needs to happen now is help with those collection agencies to help clean up those receivables so we can start recording those. Even if it was remaining overstated, it's accurately stated, it's just a process. The biggest part of the law at the time is getting the collective agency involved in all of those receivables. Also, last year, the treasurer had several accounts that weren't in the net data accounting system. They were maintained and quicken during the year they were audited. Those were all moved over to net data, except for one, which is just a minor thing, we'll get there this year.
Yeah, yes.
So, we're getting a big, big step this year. It wasn't done effective October first, it was kind of in middle gear, so we had some corrections to make there, but I believe going forward in the twenty twenty-one year, that's not going to be an issue. Policies and procedures, we recommend that the policies and procedures be written writing. There was no progress estimated in that during the year. We still recommend those be done. And then the county's capital asset appreciation schedule. In the prior year audit, we noted some items that were not on the schedule that were deleted, that we couldn't find. We didn't note any this year either that were locked down. We do recommend that we keep working closely with the department to make sure all the additions and deletions are kind of made in accordance. As we noted in the prior year, there's two non-county bank accounts from volunteer fire departments that are using the county's employee communication number. Recommend those be moved over to their own EIM person. There's an older receivable balance, this is not uncommon for one fund to borrow money from another fund from time to time. Some of these have been sitting there for quite some time that need to be repaid. Listed those there and recommend those be repaid during the new year. A few of the fee accounts have some larger outstanding checks that have been outstanding more than one year. Listed those there, recommend that those be reviewed and cleared out as quick as possible, and if necessary, ship those back to the state of Texas. In prior year, well, we noted a deposit that was not made correctly in the accounting records, it was positive correctly, but it just wasn't recorded correctly. We did not note any of those. And we noted no additional items to be committed on this year. See, we had some things that were corrected in the year that still need to be done, would like to see that. We'll, we'll investigate those next year. Questions? County had a great year financially, you know, had a clean opinion on your financials other than judicial receivables. Hopefully in a couple of years, we'll get to that point where we can start recording those, eliminate that qualification financially outstanding.
I think there is a policy procedure disaster. I think we have it.
Each office.
Yeah, it's, it's more for the accounting. How would you react? It's, it's not a disaster plan, you know, how to help the citizens, it's how to get the county back up and running. Operating this way.
The finances are good.
Thank you.
Policy. Have you got any, have you, do you have any advice for us as to who or how to properly accommodate what you, what you need or what we?
Well, yeah, for you, there's another county I'd like to visit, I'm worried to share, but I can send that, I think I've done that once before, but I can send it over, like I'll look at it and pick it back. That's what I love about governments, the sharing back. You're correct, you know, there's no, there's none of any, but we're in a private, four profit business.
Governments is well on hold.
Answer my question. I'm asking you.
Absolutely.
So like in case of something like that, New Orleans incite fire or tornado or something like that, how do we?
How do we get the county to get back up and running? It's a policy to, to provide the services you need.
Let Marshall just get us that laptop that I'm in, and all this will be payable.
My pleasure, thank you.
This is. Really appreciate it.
Agent Barton Fleming and Fleming, Public Accountant. Like this, he does a quite thorough job, I'm sorry.
Really appreciate it. It was definitely an unusual year.
It was with Chauvin and pain surgery and everything else.
Yeah. I wasn't here to kick her in the knee. No, everybody was extremely helpful, getting everything to us electronically this year, so we'll do things more remote. Hopefully in the future, we can kind of get back to normal. I think we're getting there slowly and slowly.
Time to do a search and order if it was.
It'll be different, but yes, it will be normal.
Thank you very much. So you often, I'm sure.
I'm always around. All right. Thank you.
We probably need that.
Motion, we accept it.
Motion, please.
Make motion, we accept all the advocates.
No.
I'll say it.
How do you go to ten? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Quinley, on second official approval, to approve the audit results as presented by Mike Hedges, Agent Barton Fleming and Fleming, accounting firm, all in favor. My vote is that we officially adopt the order for a second approval and report by Mayor Miller. We want to move to item number ten. This was a ten A M. Florida, this is ten fifteen. And we need open seal bids for precinct two, three, and four on chip seal application.
I received two bids. First one I received was from Lippam, Assaw, and Peyton, out of Ashville. Okay, so we broke it down in precinct two, three, and four. We'll do two first.
Two first.
Two first.
In your own line.
In your own rows. Double course chip seal. Okay, the double course for precinct two, ninety-nine thousand, three forty-eight and forty-eight cents. And the single chip seal, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty. And then prime oil, twenty-nine thousand, five sixty-eight. And I'll let Timmy run it, if you don't mind, I can use the callings. I'll give them all.
Do I need to just step up?
Hello, that's mine, precinct.
That was two, precinct two.
Just rest?
Rest. Precinct three. Double course chip seal, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three fifteen twenty. With double course, and then prime oil, thirty-four thousand, three twenty. He didn't ask for single, I think, I had someone that asked for single.
Thirty-five, three.
On the oil, thirty-four thousand, three twenty. Look at that, she gets that, she in here, man. Precinct four. Okay, double course chip seal, thirty-five thousand, four eighty-one sixty. And on the prime oil, ten thousand, five sixty.
The prime oil, time, who goes for yours?
Yeah, I got three and four. Okay. Okay. The second bid is from Blacksmith Ventures out of Jacksboro. And then the other two, I'm trying to think. It's Blacksmith Ventures out of Jacksboro. Okay, and they wrote it down in precinct two, three, and four. And it is, okay, one course seal code. So, that would be yours against Matt. Well. Okay, I've got it. The one course at fifty-eight thousand, six sixty-seven total cost. Cost per square yard is two dollars. Okay, and then on the oil, for single course on precinct two, thirty-two thousand, eight fifty-three. And then on precinct three, the two course is, oh, Matt, you did have the two course on here, one thirty-one, four thirteen, which is four dollars per yard. Precinct three, under double course, one fifty-two, five thirty-three. And then the oil at thirty-eight thousand, three thirty-three.
That's their four dollars.
Four dollars. Dollar. The oil is for precinct three, thirty-eight thousand, one thirty-three. And the double course is one fifty-two, five thirty-three. Precinct four, your double course, forty-six thousand, nine thirty-three. And the oil, eleven thousand, seven thirty-three. Hey, Timmy, this is just one page and all of them are on the page.
Um, everybody, yes. You want me to do it?
I can do it.
Do you want Mike to call in?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to make sure that.
And then Mike, can you copy some of that?
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate because I was looking at it and going after making sure that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make.
What's your name?
I'm sorry. Maurice voucher with Blacksmith Ventures. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you threw out dollar amounts, and I wanted to make sure that we were with the same square yardage.
You're not. Lippam is an eighteen. He's a twenty across.
Yeah, I use twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm just letting on of that now.
Is your partner wanting a square yard, a price per square yard?
Yes. Yeah, I have. And obviously, this is happens, happens. It's.
Where is he at?
Thank you.
Maurice, is this, is this a, I need to go over there.
Yes, this is John, John, Hayhurst.
Oh, I'm sorry.
John out of Hayhurst out of Jacksboro. And he and I work together. I knew this, made it for him, so. Okay.
First little column.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Maurice?
Yes.
On the two-point eight miles, you just did the, the MC thirty for the back, two-point eight miles, right?
You tell me.
Thanks.
Yes, okay, yes. Just making sure.
But I knew my yours was a little more expensive because he did an eighteen than you did.
It's the same price.
Correct.
He did, he did a dollar just like you did.
Always spoken. John, can you pass it to the state of Texas?
Yes.
Problem.
I said you would. When we can. Tell me.
From May the twenty-seventh, I think, for you.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I wanted, May. You know, with space, I mean, it's going to be my first.
How much pop rock put out?
Profit. That's all I could say. Well, I got it done. I'll be right, right there. But I'll do this, pull it. He'll come down for all our.
Y'all still extrapolating?
Yes.
Was it under consideration?
I'm, I'm, I'm moving on mine.
Okay.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to set Lippam's bid for the double course and the prime oil.
You got a big order?
Yeah, and a single course. I think it's double. And one.
I'm accepting precinct two, Lippam bid at three dollars, thirty-six percent per yard on the double course and two dollars, what I think, per yard on the double course. Twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight square yards on the single and twenty-six thousand, four hundred square yards. Call the fireman. Okay, we've got that with precinct three. You know what you're going to do, Roger?
No, I got an email Friday that said my reclamation crew was not coming, was not coming before this May deadline for chip seal. So, I'm not going to lock in anything.
Thank you, Roger.
I'm not gonna lock anything.
You're a villain, so right. Like each count?
Yes.
How long shall it be here for, Mike?
Till it all goes up.
Till it all goes up.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Nah, you know.
I do, I understand that.
Three second down three. And we've got number four. No action four. In here. No action. All right, we have. We have more. Lip on three second two. Single four. And double. And we've got no action. All person three. One hundred percent. Four, we'll go back to the order. Our agenda, I have numbered four to the county management for your stating. March twenty second, March twenty third, also two thousand twenty one, are there any conditions for? Pressure?
Roger, he is with it.
Is he with it?
He already did.
Please click that. With the motion, uh, Mr. Wiley, second by Mr. Roger to approve the minutes as presented for March twenty second and March twenty third. All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I don't know the five treasures. Financial report, updates on security thickness, and I see we have some reports here.
I do, I'm guarding you because I got the stuff in December. I had a little problem, under twenty dollars, but had to search for it forever to find it. So, got it all figured out?
Just figured out, you're popular.
Well, it wasn't, I think we had too much money.
Oh.
It was just a.
They withdraw.
It was just the way something was in the computer. Anyways, we have December, January, and February, who were left off last month, so we have all three months. I'm not gonna go over all of them, we've got all the details in here, if you need me to answer any questions, I will. Currently, I mean, we have a lot of money in the treasures. We have eight million six hundred sixty five thousand eight hundred forty two dollars. It seems like we've been getting grant money, all kinds of things, our sales tax is up. We've had anywhere from a hundred and twenty three thousand to ninety thousand dollars in sales tax each month, so. Everything's a positive note, we don't, except for trying to find that few dollars that we zip or work in. We paid the debt payment back in February.
I don't know, you want to finish the last one?
What's that?
Quick, off your circle.
I know. I know, they said we weren't, everything was gonna be just destitute, and we've done better this year. I guess because everyone stayed home and kept their money local, I don't know.
I know, it's not happening on the local level, it's taking a long time.
Yeah. I guess Texas just growing wide open spaces, people could breathe.
So here, we have seven planes, just eight four thousand, eight hundred sixty seven, forty four.
If you have any questions of.
Out, uh, percentage, are we on our tax, our tax question?
Well, let's see, if you bring this to an age, let's see. Well, we're only less than seven thousand dollars on current taxes. That's all we owe, that's all we need to play.
They didn't have that much appreciate for.
Yep. So we're.
Can you say that was what's what?
We budgeted five million six hundred sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred forty one, we collected five million sixty thousand two hundred fourteen cents.
Forty twelve.
Yeah. Actually, we're over in the delinquent.
That's with, uh.
No, no, I guess we need eighteen thousand, six thousand seven hundred twenty six dollars is what we're lacking in current. Eighteen thousand six thirteen twenty one is what we're lacking in the delinquent. For what we budgeted, and eleven thousand three hundred sixty eight for the penalty, penalty.
We still haven't made that.
Oh, yeah, now we'll start getting more in penalty and interest in delinquencies than we go for the current. So we're, we're doing great. I guess Purdue's keeping everyone on their toes because people are writing every day, wanting all of our delinquents, they wanna know how much we get them.
Yes.
At least two week.
They've done a very good job.
People searching in Boca Raton, Florida, Missouri, New York, they wanna know what our delinquents are. I just refer him to Purdy. I don't know.
Some move on the treasures financial report? Excuse me? Some move on the treasures financial report?
Okay, that's approved. Um, motion of Commissioner Brud, second by Commissioner Riley, um, to approve the treasures financial reports and updates on security classes, all in favor? I don't know. Item number six is considered obvious budget amendments and vouchers payable.
I have both, and a couple of extra things. Vouchers payable today, total is a hundred and thirty four thousand twenty two dollars and forty seven cents. And out of the general, it's eighty nine thousand seven forty five eleven.
So move.
Commissioner Riley is second by Commissioner Rogers to approve that paper that's presented by our county officer, all in favor? I vote.
I have the budget amendment for, um, the work done in the tax office where they brought in the plexiglass, and if you haven't looked at it, you need to, it looks fantastic. Uh, y'all approved to take seven hundred and five dollars out of contingency and move into her five seventy two line. And that's what the budget amendment's for.
The district clerk.
To the tax officer. Uh, oh one oh four ninety nine five seventy two. I think that's.
So move.
Yeah.
Second.
I will vote for Commissioner Riley and I'm second by Commissioner Brud to approve the amendments from the emergency fund to the tax AC. Line that's stated, all in favor?
And I have a request from the district clerk's office to use two hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety nine cents out of the county records management and preservation. Um, she bought, went to buy little shredders for the office, they had one big shredder and it crashed on her.
Some move.
Okay.
Okay, um, sure, what was that?
It was two hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety nine cents.
Two fifteen ninety nine?
Yes, sir, county record management and preservation. The county and the district clerk both put into that fund and they can both use it for.
That's for the district?
That's for the district clerk, yes, sir.
All in favor?
And I have a request from the county clerk for her March brand's book, um, from government forms and supplies. She would like to take it out of county clerk records management for one thousand fifty two hundred and sixty three cents.
One hundred fifty two, how much?
Uh, sixty three cents.
What's that for?
Brand book.
Branded, or be ready to come up in office for renewal, renewal.
I'll second.
So that motion is all in. And that's on two.
Yes, sir. And you have the donation.
And that was out. First, we're. Four. Sixty three dollars and sixty cents? Sixty three cents? Okay.
Oh, no, he has, yes, I remember.
Motion Riley second, Brud, all in favor? Here, I vote. Ms. Otter, is that all?
Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm hoping with something else probably, wait a minute.
Okay, item number, well, it's still six, we have a bullet point here to consider accepting donation for Bell now for historical legacy case in front of the nation. Made by Phil and Catherine Jordan. Uh, this can be a do me, it's, uh, according to law, it's our duty, I guess you could say, when these contributions come in, or to, we accept them, or either one time making, accept all of contradictions or donations that's paid. In one, a long motion sometime during the year, but this is specific, special, and I think in your tactic, there is also a real nice little card. From the ordinance. Expressing their appreciation for Bell now. Look in, all. We'll entertain motion to accept that donation in behalf of Bell now, some move?
I'll say.
Brud. Riley. All in favor? I vote. By the way, I think that little fifty dollar donation is a right.
Yes.
And another bullet point, now this is item number seven. Discuss to consider employee bonds, Chelsea Moore, chief clerk, Chelsea, three percent, one in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Some move.
Riley. All in favor? I vote. Item number eight, considers extension of its December report, request for reimbursement, Fanny Baron, four hundred ninety one dollars and sixty eight cents, Senator Lana Williams, four hundred six dollar fifty six cents respectively.
That's supposed to be for March report.
What?
For March.
That is, okay. That's March.
Some move with the correction.
Second. Rogers. I'm opposed by Commissioner Brud, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve the request for reimbursement, Fanny Baron and Savannah Williams, all in favor? Okay. I don't worry about that.
We just had a man on that.
They don't really.
I thought it'd be him, not you.
It's the original, whatever it was.
It was. We keep him away.
All information are still live on YouTube, the third party. Say Krug in.
Say Krug.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna wait until you're there, then y'all. I gotta go take a ten minute break.
Tell me. Got a, got a counter thing that was something that came up to the number over twelve hundred. The rank ninety five minute, the ranch. Four at each hour. Better get ready for about twelve. Maybe they can start, maybe they need to, they need to take. I would, that'll take.
If I had to follow the show.
Where I will say it.
Really?
Oh, they, no. Sure. I know, but we can't grow them nowhere. I'm gonna take the west, the fort, that's the road. Yeah, I'm saying they keep making work, like Fisher. And we'll find out once the final ticket settles where it is. I know, once the race started. If we could, we got that, got offered six acres across the highway right there, it used to be. We didn't have enough parking. That's Pooch's property, yeah. He didn't. That's a big pasture. They were parking in the park this year, that's what I did. Yeah, we did.
But, yeah. All the neighbors, everyone was on the front porch. That's good. They were, that's on my neighbors. Uh, it was, it was good. I was really impressed with it, and I mean, six o'clock, everybody's calling. Just a few of the volunteers there. We were sitting on the, it's really, it's really weird. You got thousands of yard guys. It was just, but it was neat. Nothing was tore up. Yeah, it took my mom and my dad, me and my mom and my dad, thirty minutes to pick up trash, and it really was.
A house, a trash house, got to use the last two packets.
You know, they were just, wasn't.
So you need more.
Yeah, we're playing the lounge club, I'm mad. It's worth it. So they had to ride them out, jump them out there, roll out.
I don't get it in my eyes.
Oh, man, it was. That was good.
Do you have enough law enforcement there, though, where they kind of off the ball?
Between all three, Young County, Ole Miss, or MTD, which that's what I like, seeing all of y'all out there, that looked really good. Yeah, we spent say, probably, I, I reckon it's been in traffic. Every year.
Who wronged that, that traffic?
We're gonna have to address the block in that, closing that road, though. That's the only two complaints that I've got, was the closing of the road. Well, an hour, and if that's all you got.
That's a good day.
That's new. We, we closed it, did not do a big deal there, yet.
Luke?
Huh?
They'll close that loop?
No. The, the sixty-one. What's sixty-one from the fort to? During the race. During the race, that morning.
How many turnout for the race, it's up?
They had over two hundred, I don't even, two, they paid us to run, how dumb are people? They paid us to run, I don't get that. It was a good turnout, though, I was impressed with that, that really added to.
How far was the local road closed?
From the fort to Lake Road, uh?
Almost at three double three.
Yeah.
No, actually, it wasn't three double three.
Yeah.
Uh, people living on the road complaining?
Uh, just one. Yeah. One. What we're trying to do is keep through traffic, because a lot of people cut through coming from Rock North, going to Graham, and they cut through on sixty-one. Want to try to steer them up to three eighty, that's the smartest way to go anyway, but, um, it turned out good. And we, we had to stop the, we had to stop the road whenever we're shooting cannons, too.
How long was it closed?
Four hours.
Eight to eleven?
Three hours.
All of the half, miles, half, hundred dollars later, in, four hours? Less than that, less than that. We were waiting on maybe one. I would bet probably five, at, you know, by eleven fifteen, the rest of them, and then in before, like, ten thirty. Eight to ten thirty, seven?
Eight thirty to ten thirty, eight thirty. It's insane.
I mean, the circus people live on Valentine's. They would tell.
Oh, yeah, they're doing that an hour, I mean, they're down everybody. And they're running around the fort before it begins, too, so.
We did, we did, we did have any really compelling.
But I did like all the kids walking around with their face pinned up and the police stickers on there, that was neat. The helicopter and the armored vehicles were awesome.
Yeah.
They funny.
Who was the helicopter?
Caraply, yeah, I think it was Caraply.
Oh, yeah, I was waiting on the others. Like, they were both.
They stayed there the whole day, they liked it.
I remember the first time we had that, it was so good. It was quiet.
And then, the last year, we had the football, we had the college football. Probably.
Crawfish was good this year. That girl that was singing, Crawfish killed her. She, she was good.
I, I was so busy, I didn't.
You never heard her sing, did you?
I, I, I was, I got to learn.
Who was that girl's name?
Jane Sims.
She was good.
She's pretty. Yeah, Graham, Graham girl.
That was, I hadn't heard of her. She was all right.
Who?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she sang really well, I heard her singing over there. How was it fun at the group that was out there?
He can't come out, shut him off.
Her dad played the guitar, too.
It was, it was him that was playing better, right?
I thought she sounded better than.
He played guitar as a girl, no, so he's the one that played, yeah, he's the one that played.
Who was it?
Jane Sims.
Danny Sims. Oh, okay. Her daddy.
She's got a, I guess, how they sound very now, she's got a very mature voice. Doesn't sound like a seven-year-old or whatever.
She's good. She really is. You could crank in that right there, you wouldn't have to do that all the time.
Hey, I waited an hour and a half.
Well, I can tell you're motioning things right over there. Boy, I hope we get out of here by, five o'clock today. You wanna do nine and then skip to eighteen? Could you read it?
Hmm?
Go on to nine and then skip to eighteen.
You can.
That'd be nice. Get you out here, that'd be, that'd be really nice.
Like, you're speaking, getting, I appreciate that.
Do you feel like any, how, how do y'all any funding that you hold there? Legs get off, you know, you hold your certificate on, you have to work on that track, running it every day.
I know, right?
Okay, we're ready to resume, uh, it is five minutes after, six minutes after eleven. We'll come back to order with, um, I believe we're on item number nine, which is, um, our sheriff, Travis Battle Coffey, does a tour from, down sheriff's office activities.
Been very active.
Well, last month, we got your jail report.
You do?
Did he email it to you?
I guess so, but we don't have the other one.
But we do have the jail.
Okay, so you don't need the hard copy? But Stacy does, okay, he's difficult.
What do you got in there today?
Fifty-four.
Did you send a bunch of them off?
We have, we sent nine off late in March.
And lost three of them.
But we're still having received any reimbursement yet.
They're waiting, I know, we weren't. There'll be a good check for us.
Should be.
Does Phillip Mayberry have the inmate?
It is.
Do everything ever, inmate is loaded?
Just, still there.
That's good, no, no news, good news.
No news, good news.
Hope that's feeding the trough. Eighty-three fifty-eight, uh?
I'm sorry, do I have?
Now, today is fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
All right. Not a whole lot to really talk about, I mean, livestock complaints, still had plenty for March. I figured up the, um, in January until today, we had a hundred and, I think a hundred and forty-three livestock complaints. It's quite good.
The grass, the green, and the orange.
Yeah, get on, get green, or that one out.
Bowling.
We had four forensic interviews last month, that's quite a bit.
That's not good.
Had one drug-related arrest with canine. Some marijuana. Civil process still looks good. I don't know, you had one a month. Had a total service call, it was seventy-eight, that's kind of down, which I'll take. Are they back? Traffic stops a little high? Little bit.
Can you put a help you on my full tank?
Yeah. Uh?
So I'm glad I wasn't on the roof, bud.
Yes, sir. I'm guys. Anyway, thank y'all, bring them, any questions? I just tried to see the.
Uh, no, we got the zero this month.
Got all the general stuff, we're better. You know, I would say the major, that part of it, yes. Um, but it's always something. That part of it, yeah, we, we, uh, dress have, where it's, we'll be working on it and turning it into. Okay. Okay. Can we jump to eighteen, so we can get this done? Okay, as a request of Commissioner Pruitt, we will move down by item number eighteen. Uh, discuss, consider survey flat, needs bound legal descriptions for each division for your review, Jimmy Williams, sales and acquisition with French Bros.
Appreciate the, moving forward.
Yeah. I heard that comment. Mike, do you comment here that, uh, we've been, um, reviewing our subdivision rules and regulations that were last adopted in two thousand and seven. And we have proposed, lady, I'm, um, I'm hoping we sell a head to the side. Although I think, link here, where they detailed it, twice, so the last time. Of a proposal to have, we'll have a public hearing on those rules and regulations. On the twenty-sixth of this month, at nine AM, on the, here, September four. In this particular area, um, I did talk about before, he had, on, and tell, um, on the, Mr. Williams and some of his associates there, for this matter, I think. Um, so, and I think, may have to. With that, Mr. Williams, I'll, I'll turn this over to you, or, last one, say, in the end.
Okay, I appreciate it. Here's the slides I apologize, I'm so sorry. Copy for everybody. Do you want this? You just hired a bathroom, like, like. There you go. Yeah, I'll give it to her. That's a hundred and ten, one, six, four, eight, which is our division of lands that we, we have it out, certainly. All of us got cattle up front. Our desires to sell this, seeking exemption. Section one fifteen, two hundred and fifteen thousand five. This is, this is, I'm sorry, that's a chapel.
Yeah, that's a chapel.
And this one, they get the district. This is the, uh, oh, I got it.
Present, uh, present an old residence, uh?
It's a residence, it was built in the late seventies.
It's just an old house, right?
Actually, it's brick, almost pretty nice, and we. Yes, sir, I'm, there isn't, old, old, right?
The barbeque here, Matt, I'm shaking. Why? She has some good taste.
I mean, how deep is?
Deep is it? Maybe, oh, yeah, they're probably. About track four and track three, that creek, that one there, gonna be purchase, and twelve inch. The track five, so they got, they gonna be. That, that could be holding, every time there is.
On, on track.
On track, track, first call in the north, because on the offlane.
Yeah, this is the mine, mine creek coming in here, and this is in a flood zone, this creek here is actually very small.
Many times here, it's very big, because I've fixed all these fences in one time.
I was so sore yesterday.
We had all that, that went out of place for years. But that creek is big, when it gets to run all that time.
They look small. Yes, sir, you're absolutely correct on this, and that was kind of one of the reasons that you see on, uh, track four, we had to carry it so far to the west, that way you come off of the county road and never.
Yeah, that's why we had to carry that so far. And we carried it a long ways, west of that creek that crosses, because of the depth of that barbeque deep, so we wanted to carry it far enough west. That way it wouldn't.
I think most of the droppings were made of, probably, to keep the water flowing, if you know, you gotta get, gotta get a. A permanent recall, but still. You gonna split them in y'all's own, or you, before, and so, or you gonna wait for that? Uh, we'll, we'll be doing. Probably before, in that process, before the action, okay? Yes, some of these, um, and maybe something, uh?
Ours is just.
Any of you out there, I'm guessing that's. Yeah. Well, the, the, what I'd say is, on each board, honestly, they probably need a culvert, that way it keeps that water going. You know, and we don't have, because if you put one there, then it blocks it all back up. If you buy a culvert, and I did buy a culvert, then your droppings gonna wash away, and mine's gonna just come water, so you just kind of let it all flow. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Culverts down here, you're gonna like, you're gonna try.
Right.
When you get down here.
So they'll be able to.
So they'll be able to see it cold.
Right.
So you may have to go eight, one, fifteen, whatever.
And some of these on this farm, and they've already got, they have some guys like, you know, that...
I think it's already got a culvert.
I don't remember.
It's a farm? Yeah, I think it does have a culvert, yeah.
I can't remember if those are culverts or if they were...
They wait, uh, things that now you have to make love, but it's...
Same? Where about?
Yeah, I can, uh, uh, it's...
Oh, yeah, that's like over here. Like on this, you can see their house. Yeah, that's...
Actually, there is this, now, with Sammy, already, I can see it all over.
Where is one of these flats, or, straight, within ten acres?
Yes, sir.
From the right, senior pan. There are all, that's, 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 that's a chapel.
Yes, sir.
There are no additional roads or common areas, not saying culvert sites or anything like that. And I think, well, in ten years, we're requesting that, for fifty, from the four. An exception to the planning rule.
But I can't stand, I have those pictures of them.
I'm gonna look, maybe I'll get a photograph of it. Is this, uh, this information, is this, uh, residence here, the red house, is that, uh, over at this John Clark?
Yes, sir.
Can we, we have...
We should be...
Uh, we're not, we're not...
I'm, dude, we're not... Oh, okay. Now, we're not actually... Sound like you know what he's saying.
Yeah.
But right now, the market is... I'll try to get what you're saying. I got problems, man. That's the problem. That is a busy. That's what I'm saying, again, they're extremely busy right now. Over ten point one. Mm-hmm. Is that the power? Yeah, Bill. They're gonna be wanting a little bit higher insurance.
If you go down to the N C A, for those that own stuff there, you can get exactly what you're checking for you, but I consider... Yeah, maybe it's small, but it gets over, and they have all those children.
Yes, sir.
Down here with this, Johnny, she'll, there's another cross, and we're gonna, like, start fixing the date, or something like that.
Now, this, this, your, uh, this creek comes in here, that looks like, it actually, not water, trick of the water.
Pretty, yeah, yeah, or tankling, more, uh, so, maybe all the other, that's right.
When we're crossing Rusty, across the highway, and I've seen that get pretty wide.
Exactly, of course, the, you know, the rules to, you know, C T, you, six foot is, if they come in there, one of the, down with that, that, in the creek, six foot down is the highest down, and then, uh...
You ever wash it down?
So what you're saying is this property's gonna be cheaper than this property? I'm not... I'm there with it.
Yep.
You did your hand stuff already, in tracks, you know, into that.
No, so we're not, this, well, you're probably not, this, you know. You're playing real good, by the way. Some people desire to have it here, some people don't worry about it.
This is fair.
So you saw what's on it, and you're not here on the south side, it's that way. I used to fly on these wheels, all the tariffs you said, it's on you, too.
That's, uh, two creeks up there.
It's not, and that's, that's not, that's really...
Just to have them on my job, that's great, you gotta give them a little shot.
Did it come over and look at, like, what they did, or whatever?
And we carried it a long way, it's been, you know, you used to try to, what do they, like, come down? I'm not, it's a really good job, generally. And, uh, water gaps and stuff on that place, fixed on there.
Like some of that, rope, against the, like, ten years ago, and, uh, that wall, it's just, you know, one place. Put a culvert right here, and come back, John, and...
I wish you could go there and have it so much, but we don't want to... You got, you know where I, you know where, you know where I'm at.
We ever had that, a little bit of...
You know, you're in here.
Snow, warm, and, uh...
Do you think, do you think we're supposed to drive? Okay, fair, right. Jimmy comes over almost every week.
Well, yeah, before you go, you can go, I would finally, I just, I'm, so that's all, but hey.
I got it, too.
Would you agree, well, this, this, right here? Would you agree this week to drive here?
Or Saturday?
This, this week's right here.
Really, look, uh, yeah, I don't know, we're going back and forth a little bit about this, but...
I don't know, we're trying to make it proper, that, somebody...
The timesheets.
Or they could, or they could share somebody's...
I'm not here, but I'm thinking, right here, and so, except for the rule.
Yeah, because that, 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 I'm...
Just have, I don't know, by Sunday?
It's, 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 no, it would, it'd be doomed Saturday night, because Sunday morning, I, I know they won't be there.
I, I meant by minimum, Sunday, if you could have a day or two, because I could come up and do payroll on Sunday.
So it is coming Saturday night, everything you turned in, even though he on Sunday morning.
Early Sunday morning.
Well, I wouldn't do it, yeah, that way I could do payroll for a day, because I would conduct a Thursday without trouble, and I wouldn't have payroll, then, I'd just send it through the feds.
We're gonna...
Also, and...
Todd, I'll take care of it.
I'll commit to, sometimes those guys, you know, kind of...
Yeah, I'll take care, and I'll, you don't have to.
Well, like, Mitch won't be around this time, so...
It's all right, I will, too.
Just have me sure they're right, you know, like, make sure everyone turn to one end. Because sometimes they're so scribbled, that I have to ask questions.
Well, if somebody, yeah, you, what are you doing today?
I am, uh, very, very...
What time you gonna be done on?
In, on the circumstances, there, uh...
We're talking about, there's their rules.
I tell you, we're gonna have a hearing on that, and there, two weeks on twenty-sixth. We'll do whatever remains in there, whatever, we didn't go on real often, or whatever, at, at that time. This is really possible. Moving the air quite right. Land subdivide. Well, it's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Or there's a big. Sure, I'm not expecting. Right, if we're probably moving and that's about moving out. Welcome to the county.
I'm charged with fraud.
What is your thing?
I like it. We got our own business. Coming in our own room.
Yeah. Our own house.
County number. We'll find out exactly what that is. I mean, obviously, on that plot, it's been having a lot of. Big. Well, I believe our desire is to have a perception minimum, a perception of property. I don't think you want to be on.
This one had to be over here because this not, you know, certainly. I would have to think is it's got to be within the minutes of states that we set this, not being subdivision, that is extension to the rule. Or else.
And in the deep, it's individual, I don't see a prescription. That's on the warranty.
Yes.
Those. Each warranty, we can protect anybody who has.
That's true.
We'll, we'll. I will leave it clear. Robert, that says this plan makes the exception to the rule of subdivision requirements. And we'll have, we'll have our say on there. If there's any exceptions. So. We have an additional plan of requirements for subdivision or preliminary, we have a file requirement. And there's several different things off in between. Current, so we'll read that again. We do have a provision in our current rule. The review of the court, good clarity of that. That this plan or this division of land makes the requirements accepted by the rule. Piling subdivision. For part of it's accepted, accepted from rules. We'll get that certificate. You can then issue that date one, the law, the governor's, if I have. I'm assuming that some of them or none of them is yet signed.
That's correct. We have, I'll be.
Seek this verdict.
It may be in some situation here, it may be a question of, I don't know, warrants.
That's right. Yeah. And by doing this, they won't technically be taught to each be their own individual needs and bounds.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Everybody, well, fully figured, who figures?
Uh, we have, let's find out. Have you talked to the water, uh, put down that water? We have actually purchased the traditional, we were through one. Of course, the one has the middle of the house and everybody purchased all those other meetings and everybody. I think.
You made a motion. Where that old house was.
You made a motion.
How long that water was still good?
Yep.
I knew it was there back.
I believe that the court finds that this subdivision of land thinks one of the accepted circumstances. Nothing that each part of land is greater than ten acres. And it all is accessible from County ninety-nine, roadway east flight, eight o'clock. And if there is no roads, no belt sites, no streets, or alleys, or common areas within the land division, it makes those exceptions.
I'll second that.
We've got all our land.
Everybody talking boring, I'll have to go to the seats.
I'll have that seat. But we appreciate your, your, uh, this. Courtesy and having your parents here. Your willingness for this fight and new experience for us also.
I appreciate your time. Well, this is not what I heard. That's something I haven't heard in the branch.
It. I think so. I think that's true.
Says on that toe over the top.
He's got one, two, three, four.
A tall. It's tall, right?
About a hundred twenty.
Absolutes is in my.
You can keep all of that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All, all in favor of that? Okay. We'll get that certificate, I'm going to tell you. I'm calling fashion, we will, like this thing. We're going to make money.
Thank you. I think.
You'll have, uh, Jim, they'll actually.
We're going to go down here.
Remember saying?
Well, we did sixteen, just say. I'll let it say sixteen.
Four panel out. Now, about sixteen, test, consider purchase, which was forty-four panel out, these cases.
Now, what, what we were thinking about doing is, like, the storage container is just kind of an eye sore out there. So, we're giving it bag, because it's just kind of a lease thing, right? And now they're just like.
But we just now started paying for it, so that's been very nice.
Yeah. Yes.
Nine of those look, where it appears real.
No. So, it isn't a eye sore.
Well, the, the, we got that for the, where we did the remodeling and then store the museum.
And, and Shannon Fowman, well, since we got those old cases in there, you know, Shannon Fowman's doing the museum thing too, for the city. For Young County.
Yeah, Shannon Fowman.
Yeah. Anyway, um, but they were, we wanted to know if we could donate those old ones, because we're, there's no use for them anymore to them.
They are, we can, uh, we can buy that, that kind of.
Okay.
But they're like, but it's, uh, exchanging.
Yeah. And then that's all that's in that container, and then they can come and get it. If they take those little old cases out, then that container will be empty. And then we can move to seventeen, where we're saying, we can get a shattered building for like twelve thousand dollar lawn mower that we're just leaving out in the rain. I mean, she's got it. It's got a cover. But still, you know what I'm saying? And then the wagons, so.
Well, is that six, sixty inch mower?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
So, we measured it, just one of the spots of why to get it in. And then the trailer, the cannon trailer, that we already had to redo the decking of that because it's itself.
Which we've been writing about.
There's been one or two more stored in that little building behind the house.
Correct.
Is there, do we not have provisions to get through that, the arcade, or is it too large for that?
It's, it's, it's a very top bit for that, and we've actually, opening that gate, it's, it's wearing that gate out. But, um, we also use that for this, like, stuff for our house.
Got personal stuff.
Yeah, we've got personal stuff in there and chemicals and.
Lot of. Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, I went, I was just gonna get some prices on a building and see if we could just buy a building for that lawn mower and that.
True.
Trailer.
And if we do use the one in the yard.
It might be cheaper to build a hive than a.
Well, it would.
Where we all. Yeah.
Let me tell you about my idea, I guess, I've thought about that a bit, myself, for a long, long time, many years, I've, um, I've desired at least, we've talked about before, is a period realistic structure out there representing the bridge. That, um, probably would have one of the power and, um, reconstruction and, and fashionable bridge, so to speak, but a, um, storage shop facility, uh, out there that, um, tenants and caretakers could get doors and repair windows and. Repair equipment, things in store for equipment and, um, we just never had, of course, we didn't have the hotel, hotel, uh, income at those times. We never could and never would find the provisions to appropriate money for that kind of thing, but that kind of envision we have, sitting out there on four grounds where service, um, need that we had regarding the equipment things and there.
And then have a little too.
And it was kind of very realistic too, to maybe attract, um, interested parties, if you will, looking over and, uh, it would be attractive. And then the torch cannon, I, I can see that we'd put one of those structures up, um, somewhere that was tarred. Where you raise more of the tars. Obviously, that had to be replaced once in a while, but they should last for a long time. And, uh, that cannon could then be displayed on daily basis if necessary, or on a special event, or that where you weren't on fire, or anything like that. And it would be, um, relatively secure for weather.
Yeah.
That's just my thinking.
Well, I like that change.
I did, that was the, the other thing that I wanted to, because we did fire the cannons this weekend, and the guy that helps repair them, there, he noticed that we have some cracks and stuff, he said, it's an easy fix now, but we don't get it uncovered. It's gonna be that. So, that, that was the other thing I.
But do we, so can we get, get permission from the court to give?
Yeah, because we never got like an amount that we could do for the cannon coverage. That was never, we got permission to do one, but we never got from, or like decided on a place for it or an amount. So, that's, that was the other.
Who do you think would be good to do some, like you said, do the reconstruction of a bridge or whatever? I mean, where could they even start looking?
Well, we can take a look at it, and of course, I, we're, we're talking a fair amount of money, uh, to do that.
Right.
You know, I, I think that it would, uh, in the long term, I think it would probably be an asset there.
It'd look better in that. It'd look better than a ten building or.
Yeah.
Container out there.
I, I, I can vision that and over, um, somewhere in between the residence and commissary. Or maybe the house and the commissary, somewhere in that area, maybe in between, um, archives and. Berries buildings. Somewhere along in there, it would be big and, um, obviously, uh, you know, we've talked about the location there where the guns, excuse me, set. That would probably be a okay place for one facility for a cover like I'm talking about.
Maybe towards the flag, but traditionally, they would have been.
Yeah, that would be.
You talk about like, it almost looks like a skinned cover for it, you know what I'm saying? Like in the old days.
I would think it'd do it toward matches the well, with the shank roof, center holes, and then have the cameras drop.
That could be, yeah, that could be.
Yeah.
Something like that. And I would think to do a little looking, I guess, before, um, some of the customers, that kind of design. And I sure there's some around.
I'm sure there is.
I don't even have an idea, y'all. Take two stories that I might reach out with the store permission to, maybe the first for some people.
Kind of covering for the cannon, like those holes and then just the part.
No, no, we're, we're, make one that kind of matches the well, with the shingle, wood shingle roof, steel poles, that way it's not a eye sore. Get putting them, that's the whole thing with the storage container, metal buildings out there, make it an acronym.
Well, as, as you say.
With the canvas sides, so if the weather, wind comes in, we can pull it down and keep it protected. In the moment of day, whenever it lasts.
I, I think, of course, the player on that thing, I'll, I'll get to express my.
I like it.
Desire or ambition.
More historic, always.
Yeah. Start to look.
I can start looking, and I, we, I have, we have one person, the one that does the cannons, you know, looked on the cannons. He knows a lot of information on that, so we can start with him. I know he probably would be able to do it, but he can put us in right there, should be a setup of.
And like you said, historical permission.
I have a story question, I can call it, or maybe they're getting. You probably could call around some of these other forts. Fort Concho would be a good one to cover. Blue Harbor would do us right with that too.
We will have, have the cannons up there.
That was the.
Seven.
That was the Sons Confederate Veterans out of, um, Evelina, San Angelo. Some of them were from Midland, one of them's from Loving, but it's all the same. Ray Johnson is the battery commander, he's the one we always use to be safe, so, uh, he knows what he's doing, he knows how to command a battery. Always puts on a good show for us.
I don't know what they want on, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Carload is going on. It was great.
It was great. Don't wait up for mission to get there.
So, do you have money for infrastructure on the H O P, this year?
No. This year, I think it's already speaking.
Yeah.
On what?
Main road doesn't been advertised. Yeah, that was. And we had like fifty, sixty dollars. The paper used ten for advertising. They had ten. What we got? What we got in there?
The mine.
The well might be, in your.
I think we only grow the name to ten thousand.
Um, so this was just for the metal buildings, just so I could have something to break to. I just said ten thousand. I like your idea way better, but one of these has a nine by eight, a building and a door on the side. Uh, this one was. Uh, the, the biggest one was one hundred.
I don't know.
The top one was sixty-nine hundred, this one is fifty-nine hundred. This one, um, thirty dollars, so that's because the trailer and the, uh, the mower, because the mower is subject, the trailer's like big. Even if we pushed it all the way back, there's still, you know, your two foot clearance, so you need a lot more bridge to get in here with the mower. And that trailer doesn't have much of a ramp for it, so we can't roll the, the mower under it. Or whatever, but it also has the trucks for the cannons, so it doesn't really, for the trucks. So, that's, you can't really load it on that trailer, or that way with the trucks. This one would be good enough if we didn't fit them both in there. Good afternoon, I thought we did. Twenty, this one is, top one's twenty-two by twenty, and the bottom one's twenty by twenty. Yeah, twenty by twenty.
Now, I can judge it.
There's a. Okay. Will you see it? I'm showing.
Those do a little looking.
Yeah.
How many bits would you like for me to get together for you?
I think three.
The least three.
We don't know this exactly, what it will be on, yeah.
Right, that's, that's what I.
I'd say, I'd say, what, twenty? You said like thirty by thirty, or?
If you talk to any of those are Concho or somebody like that, they probably got, the people that have storage, make this water cannons already. The stuff, they probably got some kind of idea about what size.
Yeah, working, working.
I'd be, but I put the trailer and everything in there. Probably.
He, me and Justin make it thirty by thirty.
Thirty by thirty, okay. And then have like a portion of it for, and then have the storage, but then have what you were talking about on the other side.
Well.
Like a workshop, is that what you're?
Mike, you got a repair one.
I thought I liked, I thought I liked needed out there and, uh, I think. I guess, I, well, there's a little room up there in front, where it says it's still kind of semi workshop.
We're using the one next to the, um, music museum. I've got some pond stuff stored in one, and then do woodworking and stuff in the other. You can get a six foot two by four here to look around, so.
Well. That's, uh, little residence far down on the bottom of it, it's not very much of a work base.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I've been needed out there for twenty years, thirty years. That, that's a kind of workshop where you can get around then and, uh, lay a door on, sawhorses, ready barbies for ready do, or.
Kathy, we have a couple of those, we'd be ready to work on.
Get in out of the weather and change oil, get a lawn mower and possibly even pick up. What we have, we have out there, other maintenance tools, storage for wheelers, for dent blowers, and everything they've been in there to have, so.
I like it.
We don't have a very good, it's not a very good location for it out there today, anyway, for those kinds of planes. And then want it to look like, you know, it look like a piece of wood.
Is that one of you?
Oh, I can. I guess we're up there from the porch.
How much did you spend on Concho?
She's gonna pull the. Thank you.
Yeah, no, actually. Well, then on sixteen, we want to do on sixteen.
We'll follow, uh, with the.
Shannon Potts.
We'll follow.
Shannon Potts on that, uh.
Well, we'll need to have that as in, uh.
Okay. Tim.
We'll make, it'll be some, some kind of little, little room of some sort, or we'll probably like where it's changing.
Hey, for next agenda. For.
She's probably got a, um, one, two, three. She knows how. So, all I have to do is do a.
Donation from offering from. From Feldmap to whatever, what is Shannon Potts' organization?
Young County Museum of History and Culture.
Young County Museum. What?
No, I have.
It's from Feldmap.
Donation of property from.
Who? I'm counting here. Museum. Shannon Potts.
I'm sorry, entertain myself.
They got their.
Wish you the world a good rest, eh?
These are the top.
No.
Just when I go down the. We're at forty thousand, we spent seven thousand. You got thirty-two thousand and six hundred and ninety-one. But we didn't make sure, this year showed us the prior.
Well.
And.
But we've got to figure out why we're.
Is that, is that something?
Yeah. They had a ten dollars on certain side.
We're needing. But maybe, maybe they can.
No, it's, no, it's on that promotion.
I was, I was in Arkansas. Stayed there. To, like, where you do your blackish, where you start the walls from.
I'm not Andy. I'm that candidate. What we.
It has a three for a black one. The front side of it. And then the back of it, it's all storage.
Is that key ridge?
I'm not sure, I would have kept. I think I left, I would have indicated all that storage unit. I'm sure it was nice. I actually have a horse. Like, I'm already something to do with it.
You don't want some horses?
I would, I could. I mean, bring mine later.
Thank you.
Okay, that's my phone. I'm done for eleven. We're gratifying the local cooperation, I think we reached, going Young County and City of Brown, City of Orleans, St. Stevens County and City of Broken Ridge, we do not have Stevens County's executed, although we did have their money. They did send us money.
Most important.
But, um, we, we do have, um, Brown, Orleans, Broken Ridge's executed agreement. And I've been trying to get those things for a long time, about to have find that cost. Broken Ridge came in, uh, probably almost a year ago on the west, on our, reached out to them. I don't know, I visited. Just wrote, asked, they got executed several times of.
So, what you're saying is we need to ratify all of Stevens County?
Uh, yeah, first, we ratify those, with the one we have, I'll send them executed agreements.
Stevens County's one we don't have.
Stevens County's one we don't have, okay. We didn't have their money.
I make a motion that we ratify all of the local corporate funding agreements, with everyone except for Stevens County that we do not have yet, and we'll do it when we receive it.
Second.
Mr. Wilding, starting by Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
The executed agreements, the ratified agreements.
Regarding this sponsor. Do you help them take it on that? We bought ten of those. He, he exceeded the ten, I know if he had ten of them, so.
Broken Ridge. Brown. Orleans. And we do not have. Stevens County's executed agreement back, so we can ratify. And that's, uh, Polly on the motion, Pruitt on second. And that's, uh, Wally on the motion, Pruitt on second, on paper. There's, uh, four, five of them. Number twelve is ratify interlocal agreement between Young County, Texas and the City of Longley regarding limited police, fire, emergency medical, health communications and dispatch services. I think all that's in your packet, it's way on it, lays out what Young County's gonna do and what it's gonna cost to get to Longley. I think it's forty, right now forty-three thousand, it's on the, for this package. That's an agreement that we reached, I don't know, several years ago, and it's been effective for, I don't know, the last five or six years. I make the most of that with that agreement, probably. Second. Question? Motion of Mr. Rogers, second, Mr. Preston to ratify such agreements, um, for health communications, dispatch services with City of Longley, on paper. There's five of them. Another ratification here is five-year police agreement between Young County and the City of Longley, or two-one hours from place, or a period of storage, purpose. Mr. Rogers, precinct three, um, that's, that will be the use over there to store aggregate material and other, other materials against. I make the motion to ratify that, um, for the other county, City of Longley.
Say.
Rogers, five. On paper? I think there were, there were, only thing we changed in there was the location or building address or whatever, they went to City Hall and it was wrong. They had the improper address in there, they were, I wanted to hear that, our attention, as to that. Hand correction without the front logo, so they just changed the number, street number. Um, the fourth thing, just consider job, Department of Kyle for, it's seven nine one one coordinator, exactly what we did was the, um, Department. Permitting Public Services, which still the coordinator and was, I think, Jimmy, actually just.
Yeah, I think we need to add that nine one one, we want to go back into it.
You know, we want to do that. Fun deal, and. He just asked for that to be the coordinator, so I, I agree with already ratifying the job description, so change the name, or then have it named actually to the coordinator, so the position status still is coordinator. And I would prefer it played that way in sales, of being the nine one one coordinator, but we don't do any more of that dressing, although.
I, I need, we do more than thanks as far as people coming in and doing stuff, but.
That's, that's assisting, North Texas Department of Lightning Commission, whatever it is, he may drop out there, I'll back that, but. Been a lot more, that position will do a lot more of the OSSL, a lot more of these subdivision claims, and a lot more of the other public services necessary. And fact of the matter is, you made the motion, um, that, uh, we adopted that name and we called it coordinator.
I agree, but I feel like that we need to add the nine one one too, we leave the Department of Public Service, but I, I feel like the nine one one address needs to be in there.
Well.
Go on, the description, we would, um, say, says coordinator. They still count red, right?
People do think it's. Yes, put it with the bottom end and, um.
Nine hundred and fifteen, I learned that's on February the eighth, when everybody made the motion, put it in my case, the job description, and bring nine one one addressing to the Department of Permitting Public Service, outline it to the team, open the second office, place of rest, and buried to road. I think Matt had left that meeting.
I know.
Right prior to that.
It is. And then right before we walk out that day, you brought us, if y'all want to leave the nine one one.
Oh, no, we discussed that time before that.
But after that, I'm saying.
It doesn't matter, maybe I just figured nine one one would come back to it before it goes.
Yep.
Was that?
I figured the nine one one address would come back to us. Eventually.
Eventually will.
No, it wasn't. Regardless of whether we go do the addresses or not, it has to go with North Texas, and they're the one to apply to the nine one one addressing, man. They send their information down here and it is incorporated then into our National Rescue Rescue Act. But any address that is created by who, and goes through North Texas, Redland, they do it for all other eight counties. Now, other than us, we're, we've been the last one there, but I wasn't aware of that till, like, last year, with, that's how that process works, so. They want it back, with their purpose, we saw it through that.
Well, I still feel, I still feel like we need to add that to that.
Not a motion?
That is a motion, add the nine one one coordinator back to that, or nine one one addressing, back to it. We can leave the Department of Permitting Public Service, but I just feel like we need to add that back to it, take out some of the confusion, people coming in and stuff. But I didn't make that in form of a motion.
Thank you, yeah.
Got this motion to change right up to the nine, the nine one one, or the Department of Permitting Public, Permitting Public Services. Is there a second? I'll say. One hundred. Second. Anybody discussing? All in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? I'm gonna be opposed to. Is that a four one?
Not a four one.
Yeah, a four one, uh, before, I, I didn't hear anybody else opposing. Out of number seventeen, down to number fifteen, maybe. Discuss, consider sale of monitor ten-foot mortgage board, on Gov. Deals Auction Web Site, do you want?
Actually precinct three, actually gonna be precinct three, gonna put it on Gov. Deals, gonna cost anything, I sent some picture, emailed us a picture.
Pretty good, okay.
We'll put it on there for two or three weeks, three weeks maybe.
Can, you just give me a date, you want to close it?
When you want, uh, off the big, what's the, uh, what's the next meeting?
Next, please, twenty-six.
What's the next meeting after?
Ten, ten.
Okay. My goal.
Yeah.
Stop them on Friday and Friday.
Yeah, what we have done too is, we can even stop them at nine o'clock that morning, that, and that.
You do it after that morning, makes a difference.
That's gonna make it late.
It did on our beginning, it was a nice day.
Yeah, it did.
I went to the last minute to be at anywhere, wherever your dates you set. That's gonna make it, that's fine, eight ten to eight thirty, ending.
Ending, okay. Look at them at ten o'clock on Monday.
Or refuse at ten AM.
Okay.
Late ten. Send you some pictures and whatever other information you want.
Okay. I'll email it on and she'll tell me, because sometimes I have questions on it, and if they do, I'll ask you, then I'll go in there and type them in, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eighteen at nine, lady.
He's at eight thirty, we close it at eight thirty and then look at them at, at ten and four.
That's actually, uh.
She will ask me if you want to reserve on that, basically.
Okay. No further motion, uh, Mr. Rogers.
No second?
Second, uh, five. To, um, sale on government, Gov. Auctions, I say Gov. Deals, Auction Side, to end the meeting, maybe at ten.
We like thirty-eight AM, and for review, which is the end during our regular meeting, again, in, uh, thirty-six, I correct?
Yes. That's signed, uh. All in paper?
Aye.
We cover from the seventh thing. Except the, uh, check prices. Eighteen, we've done that.
Did y'all do anything on that or is that?
Excuse me?
Is that eighteen tabled or is it?
No, well, we planned, before we planned, that it met the requirements, or an exception to the plan to us.
Okay, good.
And we'll, we're gonna pray somehow she gives the, to, or the, the value of the property, stating that it makes those departments, so we can deliver that also to, one, each one. Lot, fire lot, um, purchase.
Purchase, okay.
I don't know, nine, ten, discuss, consider lease in two thousand twenty-one, John Deere Motor Rider, place of rest.
From RDO Equipment, and they give me two different prices, one for joystick, one for antirack, I'm gonna go with the antirack, it's gonna save me about two thousand a year on that. And, uh, at this point, that's about my only options to, rather than lease one than to purchase it at this time. Not much, um. No, they didn't, but that's just to discuss. I'm not making a motion as we, uh.
And it's an actual lease, isn't it?
Yes, it's an actual lease area.
For what annual cost, let, place it.
It will be, right at twenty, try to make sure I'm not giving you the wrong one, at this point. Twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars a year.
Okay.
And then with, uh, depend, on the two-year, if we go with three-year, which is what I think we're worth, it'll be twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
For three years?
For the three-year lease. That's with RDO Equipment.
David, you moving? Moving, Mike, you're moving that motion through, uh, next to the three year, please?
Yes, sir.
What, how much for joystick?
Joystick, joysticks, uh.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, seventy-five, forty-four.
I've got it right here, and that's what, what equipment company?
RDO.
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 R D.
RDO.
R E L.
R O.
They're the only John Deere company that does governmental in our area, um, Yellow House, talks about one door, somewhere in there.
Here's the joystick one here, and it's twenty-seven nine seventy-six and nineteen cents.
And the antirack was twenty-four seven oh five.
Yes.
We'll go second on that. Second motion, the.
I'll say.
And both, uh, Mr. Preston, second of Mr. Wally, execute a three-year lease, and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars annual cost to RDO Equipment Company, or one, John Deere, Motor Rider, of certain size. All in paper?
Aye.
On what?
Seven, four hundred and seven, seven sixty. Seven, seven, you think?
On what?
Motor truck?
Yes.
Six.
Seven sixty.
Seven sixty, you think?
Seven sixty-seven?
John Deere Annual. Deere Annual化. Six seventy-two GB.
Six seventy.
Six seventy?
Six seventy-two GB.
I'll be Mike for sure on that.
All in red.
I think that's the one you have for getting married.
All in red.
One of them is six seventy-two GB and another one is a six seventy-G.
You're getting a six seven, right, or you're getting seventy-two?
Yes, I'm getting a six seven.
Okay, so you're not getting all the back?
No.
Okay.
Seventy-G.
Six seventy-two GB.
You need, uh, six seventy-G.
Uh, number twenty is acknowledged and recorded permission slip regarding brush filing, burning and stolen on private property, Stacy Preston. I don't really know if there's unnecessary action or other than the recording of those permission slips, but other motion, but I'm there.
I just don't want you to properties wrong, so I make motion to be accepting permission slip.
That's a, that's move that, um, let's move that, uh, file, refile the permission slip, okay?
Okay, I'll say.
Mr. Cresswell, second about Wally. File permission slip. Marty Smith and John S. Laker. They're under the road, run the actual.
I'll have to brush pile it up before I take off, so I'm trying to get where we can go in and then...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I didn't get a number on these, but we've got number twenty-one here. Consider application for road crossing permit, Sean Smith, Usland Road, there's two locations on the same road, that's gonna be a boring application, I understand. Jimmy, do you have anything, you know, what, where, what, where we're going up?
Yes, is this both of them a big board? Like, what, can you prove that, kid?
Do they have to pay?
I don't know, you charge me?
Why you say? They're going forward, I promise, we're liking it.
Okay.
We're waiting for all utilities.
How are you gonna put it for future, maybe, if you do more, wherever, I don't know, if they're, they're awarding or whatever, it's all right. What is all the work? I think you just give me for this game. He'll go side of the road here.
Motion from Mr. Wally, two thousand second, third, I did, party. Will prove the applications. For two sites on, for the road crossing on two sites of Usland Road. Site number one, site number two, question, all in favor? Uh, low. Okay, now, discuss consider burn restrictions. Then we can rain all week.
Those are going to be necessary.
We're getting, I think, that's a gun, no, we, well, all... The last one. That's twenty-two and number twenty-three. Is it earning for the business, but unnecessary or required at this time?
Make a motion, Jared.
Can I, did we just get these for, so we know?
Oh, yeah. Being, same or same this?
Same.
Yeah, it was by here late last week. Um, this touch base, front those. You brought those, I asked if I could give each of you one.
Okay.
That's what that's all about, is probably, they just, like, just make some like, uh, programs that are going through, or things they still like to do.
I'll take it if you don't...
On any action, they'll take them on the hands and all this.
One last second, give me some.
Do you want your hard copy or not? You, I mean, I just, it's down my tab because we have people on the side that request them.
You sent, you sent this thing.
I did send, do you want to keep your hard copy or not? I want, there's gonna be a test on it. I have some for the good, you know, Stacey back from the adult table.
It is. Hey, Stacey, how do you feel leading the kitty table to the adult table now?
Welcome back to the adult table, Stacey. Mickey was baiting over to the little side table.
Sorry, I didn't see this myself. How's Jenny looking?
I'm hey, Mark. It's not Mickey, I think I called you off the bump.
Okay.
Correct.
She's being, the junkyard?
Yes.
It's not big, David, she wanna yell at you, do a drum.
I know. Judge got to go peek.
Fast beat on.
Good seeing you. You too.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.